Want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Community Unit District 186 Board Meeting. And Mrs. Hines, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Door?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Here.
Mr. Randy?
Here. Next item is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda, and we are adding a COVID update, which will be in old business along with the financial update, which will be informational. Dr. Evers, are there any other changes to the agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated September the 22nd, 2020; District 186 budget hearing minutes from September the 22nd, 2020; Tri-County minutes dated September the 9th of 2020; Tri-County bills for October 2020; applications and reports. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What do we got going on here?
They don't have any sound in what the audience are sitting.
You want to continue on, Dr. Evers?
I think so. He'll get it. He'll get it, thanks.
Item number six is the approval of the District 186 bills for October of 2019. I'll open it up to questions from the board, and there's two packets. So if you have a question, please let us know if it's from a packet with 15 pages or 12, and then the page that you're asking the question from. Any questions at board?
So I on the little packet, page 11, to Stacy Tev, the Google Classroom grade transfer system. Is that like an interface that goes from the Google Classroom to Power School?
That's my understanding. That was kind of a pilot, so I just kind of could try that out. Sort of the rest of the district could use that. And most of the high school teachers are using it in many of the middle schools. It converts so that they don't have to hand key from Power School to, from Google Classroom to Power School. So it's an extension, and it's a very, very helpful.
Is that the same thing that this grade book software is on page four of 12 for 1,400? Is that the same?
No.
That's different?
Right. There's a software that individuals teachers can use for their grade books.
That's different than Power School?
That's an extension that converts the grades over for Power School, for Google Classroom.
So it's more of a replacement for the traditional, right?
I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
About the same thing, or?
They do the same thing. They're for grade trading purposes, but the one with an L makes it similar, and sort of handout.
Any other questions from the board?
I thought I had all the... Okay, the all-school Google...
Which packet?
It's one of 15. The all-school Google enterprise licensing, just what is that?
Do you need to add all the Google enterprise licensing?
What page is that?
It's the first page.
Right in the middle.
So Google changed its licensing model. It's still free to use the basic Google apps for education. But there's a lot of services that schools have been given for free for the last several months, whenever COVID hit, and that expired at the end of September. And so that's where this is picking up. It allows us to adapt to people needs and things like that. Teachers have been using. So that's what we license.
Page four of 15, is there work on the practice software field or pencil field? Did we get other... I know we didn't have to go off for a bid, but we...
We did get that level. And actually finding, sometimes finding different, but we did get two different quotas for that work.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 bills for October of 2020.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Randy?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven is communications, and I understand we got two?
We do. The first one is from Ashika Smith. Dear Mr. Navara, please accept this letter as my formal notice of resignation as a junior varsity girls' basketball coach. Again, I am thankful for all the opportunities Murkiesboro High School has given me and the impact everyone has made on my life. Coaching gave me great satisfaction along with many teachable moments. I will never forget the experience and the incredible staff I encountered. Thank you again, Mr. Navara and the Murkiesboro High School community. Sincerely, Larry Ashika Smith. The next one is from...
Let's go ahead and get that one.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm assuming the administration is making the recommendation to accept the resignation, and I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The other one is from Ted, which we call Larry McDaniel. To the Board of Education Community Unit 186, effective December the 1st, 2020, I resign my position in maintenance. Thank you for the opportunity to work here for the experiences I obtained while doing so. I will always remember what I have learned here and thank the dedicated staff for the knowledge they shared with me. I wish you all the best in the years to come.
And that's the recommendation of the administration to accept Mr. Daniel's resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight is fishbowl items. I see a fishbowl, but I don't know if there was any in it.
I got one. This is from Mr. Keener. Congratulations to Coaches Brian Anderson and Jimmy Brown and the Lady Devil softball team for an outstanding season. The girls finished the year with a 13-3 regular season record. After regional wins over Sparta and Ducoyne, the Lady Devils defeated Red Bud and Carlisle in the state tournament before falling to Carville in the championship games. The team represented our school and town with sportsmanship and talent, and we are very proud of them. And number two is congratulations to Coaches Jeff Green and November Davison and the Blue Devil cross-country team on a successful season. At the regional meet held last Friday in Ducoyne, the Devils placed three runners in the state meet. Mia Gilmore finished second, Maya Jenkins ninth, and Greta Snyder tenth to advance. Best wishes to them and the coaches at state on Friday.
Very good. Is that the only one? I don't see anybody else. Okay. Item number nine is Freedom of Information Act request. I don't see any here, so I'm assuming there was none?
We'll have one next month. We'll have one next month that we just received.
We just got one yesterday after the board packets went out, so.
Got it. All right. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. I don't see any public here, but were there any, are there any public concerns or any presented to us? Okay. Employee concerns. Very good. Next item. Need to conduct a public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell $5.5 million general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source, for the purpose of altering, repairing, and equipping school buildings and facilities of the district and improving the sites thereof. The public hearing is to receive public comments on a proposal as stated. I would like to defer to Dr. Evers and Mrs. Bush to explain in more detail the reasons for the proposed proposal issuance of bonds.
And this is on page three of the middle school project, so you have been working with PMA for the last several weeks and discussed the bond issuing?
Right. We are looking, anticipating opening bids for the project. I think they're getting ready to go out to bid now, very shortly after the Board meeting, getting those bids on the street. So once we open the bids, we'll have a better idea if we actually might be able to sell a lesser amount of bonds. That's my hope is, but we have to, since we only want to go through this process, it's a three-process meeting, you know, last meeting to actually approve the resolution, the binding hearing now, and then next month we'll have the final meeting to approve the bonds sale if the Board chooses to do that. So our hope is that when we actually do that, it might be a lesser number, but we have to aim high just to make sure that we cover all of our costs because we don't want to do this again and delay the project. So that's where we are with that. We are working with PMA, and what they're doing is currently actively negotiating the cost of the issue. So they're talking to the underwriters and financial advisory fee, bond counsel, disclosure counsel. So there are a lot of pieces that go to issue the bonds. So they're looking to get us the best rate, the best issuance costs, and get everybody to sharpen their pencil. So that's kind of where we are on that.
Are there any quit? Go ahead. I have one. The primary method of paying back these bonds is going to be through the sales tax?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the only option? Or if something, if the sales tax doesn't come in at the frequency we hoped, or what would be the alternative?
Then these bonds are sold, and this is the same as the bonds we sold in 2017 and 2019. The backup would be property taxes that our taxpayers pay for those. We are seeing, you know, we had a few months of a decline in the county facility sales tax because of COVID, but we're starting to see that pick back up. So June looked pretty good, and I think my idea of why June looked pretty good is the dispensary opened in Carbondale at the end of June. And so I'm curious to see what July is going to look like, but I really believe that the effects of COVID are going to be offset by the facility taxes realized through the dispensary sales. So I think we're going to be fine with that. I was a little concerned, and then once that opened and we saw June kind of a big jump over what we've been seeing, I think that we'll be absolutely fine. Because of what they're seeing in other counties that have dispensaries, they are realizing huge increases.
There was a huge increase in August, just in August alone. It was huge. Yeah, the lines alone just visually told you that it was just very active.
The counties that have had those in January when they're first opened, Union County, Williamson County, and they are realizing some pretty big increases. So I think that's going to be, that's going to be good. But there is a backup in the alternate revenue bonds. We do have a backup. So if there is, for whatever reason, I mean, obviously, we didn't see this coming with COVID, but whatever reason, there would be a backup in a way to repay those bonds.
If the Board votes to abate the sales tax, how much is on the table on that this year?
Well, these aren't abatement bonds.
No, I know, but like, sort of to his question...
What we do in January?
Oh, for the, for the, for the general obligation bonds from the 2009 series. I want to say it was 420,000 or somewhere ballpark for that bond, abating that bond. But those are the only ones that we have up for abatement. The other ones automatically go through the sales tax revenue unless the revenue's not there. But we do have that coming up. Board action, I believe we usually do that in January.
I think it's January.
That vote.
Other questions from the board? I'll ask for public comments, even though there's no one here. But Terry, did we give any written?
We didn't.
All right. If there are no further questions or comments concerning the topic and no written testimony has been received, we would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second?
Second. And Mrs. Hines?
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Randy?
Yes. Motion carries. We will now move into old business. First item is the financial and COVID update, which is informational only. Dr. Evers, are you handling this?
Sure. I will do the COVID update and just a little bit of discussion. We're in the general. We'll address any other questions about. You will see that we have our audit, and we are in financial review early warning, sorry. And one of the things that we're going to have to look at is potentially some changes to how, how many sections we have at grade levels. So when we have retirement or attrition or teachers moving on to other districts, looking case by case on whether or not we'll need to have six or seven of those sections and potentially having those decisions class by class because our expenditures are exceeding our revenue. And with last year's adopted, or I'm sorry, the contract, the CBA, with the benefits in language, that's an expense that will be with benefits and salaries. It will be a recurrent cost, and so we'll have to look at each retirement over the next three to five years and determine whether or not those positions need to be refilled or if they can be absorbed, you know, at the building level. And so those will be discussions, not any type of cuts, but just looking case by case when we do retirement or attrition or our teachers moving on to other places. So that was one of the ways that we were very mindful of staffing in each position when I worked previously as a superintendent. So you didn't have to, you know, change your workforce. But when they reshape themselves by moving on or retiring, then we looked at each position and determined whether a reduction of a section would put us at an uncomfortable staff, our teacher-to-student ratio. And so we'll look at each of those decisions. And so not every retirement will necessarily be a post position. And so that was one of the things that I talked to with the building principals as well as the association last week when we had our touch base. Just kind of the model that I've always operated under, you know, when we hire great people, we want to retain great people, and that's the goal. But when we look at replacing positions, we'll have to be really mindful of, that we, you know, we have to say in early warning, you know, that the next level is financial oversight. And so it's incorrect action planning. Our budget, we didn't have to do a budget reduction plan. So our shortcoming is not to the extent that it's noteworthy yet at the state level. But if you do that across multiple years, I will say that with the mitigation strategies, not really looking to sunset anytime soon, I have to think that in the next full year, we can look at bigger class sizes, you know, even two, three, or four. Because when you look at that six-foot social distancing, having class sizes of the 20 or fewer at kindergarten through sixth allowed us to safely socially distance. And we might have to have that as a strategy next year. But over the next three to five, we'll have to look at each position on whether or not we'll retire or if we'll absorb. So I wouldn't say that absorption will probably be on the horizon for next year just because of the mitigation efforts that we've had to do for COVID and just not knowing what next year will hold for us. But I just wanted to be upfront that that will be the strategy that I'll look at to do some, you know, spending reduction.
So our payments from the State Board of Education have been coming in timely. Just kind of a reminder that we have flat funding with our evidence-based funding. No new money this year, as is the model with the evidence-based funding, which is going to be difficult. We deficit spent last year with new money, and now we're going forward with another year with increased raises, you know, increased salaries in the contract and for non-certified staff, and a minimum wage increase with flat funding. So that is going to be a little bit difficult. Just something else just to throw out there, which doesn't really immediately impact our finances, but I just thought the board might want to be aware of this. You've probably seen something about fraudulent unemployment claims. We've had those. We've had several of our teachers and administrators, some of them filed fraudulent claims. And so, you know, we've worked with unemployment to notify them that those are fraudulent claims. And then they, in turn, provide the information so that our faculty and staff can, you know, make sure that their credit's okay and give that information. So not something I'm happy about when you see those claims and you know these people are working every day, and obviously, they didn't do that. So that's something that not just our district, but many districts and many businesses are encountering right now. Other things, other than the bonds that we're working on, next month we'll have, I'll bring to the board, our preliminary tax levy in November and an adoption in December. So I would imagine looking to do a budget amendment in the spring just because there are so many things that are unknown to us right now. And already not included in our budget is the bond, the bond sale. So already, I know we're going to have some changes that are pretty significant, and so I will be, we will be looking to do an amendment. So that's really all I have for now. Any questions you have about any of our finances, you know where to find me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on to the COVID update. The first box is one that you're familiar with. It's on the district webpage. And I put it out each week with my Thursday thoughts. So this is this week's update. So it goes from Monday to Monday, the 13th through the 19th, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So that's our current activity. That will be updated each Monday. The information that I provided below, well, Mr. Parenton's going to attach once I have an opportunity to talk to the board about it. So information on Johnny Logan, first quarter, we had 184 all-remote students. 77 moved to in-person, and that leaves 107 as all-remote at General Johnny Logan. Carruthers had 132 all-remote, 55 moved to in-person four days a week. And there are 77 all-remote quarter-two students. And then Mr. Keener broke it up a little bit differently. There's a net change at eighth grade of 12 moving to, from all-remote. Seventh grade changing to blended with 16 and now moving to all, from blended to all-remote. At eighth grade, there were two, so that's why there's a net change of 12. There were 14 who moved from all-remote to blended and two that moved to all-remote. So for eighth grade, there's 46 total all-remote. Seventh grade, 16 moved to blended, leaving 48 all-remote. Sixth grade, there are nine students who changed from all-remote to blended, and that means that at sixth grade, there are 43 all-remote students. At the high school, there were 164 all-remote learners first quarter. 29 remote learners moved to in-person blended, and that leaves 135. Ongoing and new efforts, hallways are clearly labeled. There's directional stickers, social distancing stickers, spacing of seats six feet or greater apart. And Miss Thinky provided each grade level with a double yardstick so that they could assure that their bots and their desk seats were all socially distanced. There's directional errors in the classroom and as well as in the hallway spaces. Bottle filler stations replaced conventional drinking fountains. So students all have a bottle, and they fill it when they go to the bathroom or when they go to their drinking fountain time. Students K to A remain in one classroom throughout the majority of the day. Sanitizer and cleaning supplies are readily available in each classroom and utilized throughout the day. The middle school classes are bubbled by floor, ensuring the grades do not interact. Johnny Logan now has three designated lunch areas. The primary is the cafeteria. The secondary is half of the gymnasium because it has a wall partition. And the third area is the main office hallway. So we put additional faculty, staff, paraprofessionals out there to watch during the lunchtimes. And then Carruthers is able to meet the needs of their lunchtimes with two designated areas, which is the cafeteria and the stage of the gymnasium. And the rules yesterday, when it changed with the governor's mandate, it did not change for public schools, so we can still have up to 50 in the area. So we just look at the maximum capacity with six-foot social distancing patient in the same direction still being our goals. Masks are worn throughout the day. There's plexiglass barriers in offices and smaller spaces. Any teachers who have requested any specific type of accommodation, whether it's a shower curtain or a roly plexiglass cart when they move to a different class. The band has plexiglass shields that their teachers can stand behind. So we use plexiglass in lots and lots of places. And Mr. Ripley already created, even though all classrooms at this point are safely able to socially distance, he created, and it's a little dark because I copied a copy, so if you can't really see it, this is the original of it. It's three-sided, these plexiglass barriers that the health department has said that if we can't maintain the six-foot social distancing, it will be appropriate to utilize as a reduction. If we have to get below six feet, you can put these barriers in. And so they've created them and utilized them for a few students who are immunocompromised or their family is so that they can, even if that's six-foot social distancing, we put them around them so that they're, you know, have an additional bubble so that a friend can't pat them on the back or do any of those.
So they are, they are six feet, but this is just additional?
This is just additional. We've had a couple that families have sent their kids in, and they have some conditions at home that they've communicated to their teachers. And we've just been able to slide them around them. But yes, they're still six feet. That was one of the things that the two principals did a very, very vigilant job. At fourth grade, there were about three sections last week that with all the moving back into in-person, some of the remotes had to be redistributed to other sections so that we could assure that there would be six-feet social distancing. So all classrooms still have six-feet social distancing. If we have to get there, there's already a dozen of those created. Or if someone says, you know, my children are babysat by their grandparents who are immunocompromised, is there anything else we could do? We can still slide them around. So anytime that we can accommodate or add an additional barrier, you know, where it's requested.
Did you say that there are some instances where there can't be six feet maintained, or no?
No. At this point, no. At this point, no. Now, let's look at the remaining numbers. When we talk about potentially after Christmas, we still have a potential for 107 students to move, now it's across all sections of kindergarten, first, and second, as well as third, fourth, and fifth. So they'll be distributed across over 30 faculty and staff members. So that's about, on average, maybe three per class. But it will be, at some point, we may have to have that conversation. But the health department has already looked at our mitigation barriers, those three-sided, and they do do a very nice bubbling of a student. Ms. Asa has a student who's in one because he has mass stamina issues because of her class's, you know, population. And he's been in the little, the bubble as he builds his stamina, and it seems to work really, really nicely, keeping everyone feeling and being safe. And the health department has seen those strategies. But at this point, we've done them as just additional layers of accommodations for the one special ed student. And this will go on the webpage tonight, and I will update the movement from remote to in-person or in-person to remote each quarter. So you'll get an additional one of these, and they'll go onto the webpage, but I wanted to share with you first, so.
What are we, what's the, I guess, protocol as we approach flu season? If somebody has symptoms, are we just going to assume it's COVID unless they can show a negative result?
Well, and that's a great question. And right now, any of the 11 symptoms that are on the screener sheet when they come in, if your child comes to the office and says, "I have a headache," at this point, they go home and their siblings go home, and they go home for 10 days. The only way that they can come back is if they get a doctor's note that child, and then the impacted child, the one with the symptom, says that they have migraines, right? Or seasonal allergies, and this is attributed to barometric change issues with the seasons, right? That can change or a negative COVID test. So one of those three can get them back prior to the 10 days, but otherwise, the symptomatic child and their siblings. So almost all of the flu symptoms are on the 11. The nausea, the diarrhea, the headache, the fatigue, the chills, the fever. Almost all of those are also traditional flu symptoms. So if they come down and express it, the child, if they said, maybe a kindergarten might say, "I have a sore throat," and they may say, "Okay, take a few steps from your water bottle. Let's wait 10 minutes," because sometimes they'll say, "Well, I just had Pop-Tarts for breakfast," right? But if it's like, "How does your throat feel?" Or, "Did it hurt when you came to school?" And they'll say, "No, it felt great when I came to school." Then they might send a kid back occasionally. But pretty explicitly, we have kids that go home every single day with one of those 11 symptoms, and it could be a headache, a runny nose, cold. a runny nose, cold, any of the 11. And so those are all very similar to the flu. So if they present with anything that is on that list, they go home and they go with their siblings at this point for 10 days.
And then do we report that to the health department so they can contact trace?
They don't. Not for one of those symptoms unless they get a test and they are positive. So it's symptomatic, yeah, the symptom, unless they have a test and it comes back, COVID positive.
So if they elect to sit out the 10 days, could we assume that that means that it wasn't something else? And should we be reporting that to the health department?
No, it's considered to be, it's considered a temporary remote status, and that's a requirement. So even if it was just a headache, and we found that there are some families who do not have primary care physicians to write that note that says, you know, Cara has migraines, right? And so they have to sit it out. So a lot of times, it might be access not, might be lack of access to a primary care physician who will write it so that timeline stops. And then families who are not inclined to say, "Well, it's just a headache, you know, or it was just a tummy ache. They're fine today, but we have to sit out 10 days because that's ID page is requirement." Unless they get a doctor's note that says it's something other or a negative test, they can come back before then. So the requirement, you know, even if they feel perky and great the next day, they still stay out unless they have a doctor's note or a negative test.
Are you saying that most of the students who do go home with a symptom are getting tested?
No, I'm saying most of the time, it's about half and half. There are several parents who can call and say they have seasonal allergies and get a note that says it's related to seasonal allergies. But then there are some families who will just sit at home with their children in that temporary remote model because they don't have a primary care physician who will say it's related to seasonal allergies or headache or an upset stomach.
But COVID testing is free, so...
We can, we can...
No, I know. But I mean, they could, if they don't have a primary, they could go get a COVID test and in 48 hours have a negative result and send them back to school. So I guess I'm saying if like they're not doing that, to me, that would imply that they probably think it's COVID also.
I don't know if you would, we would necessarily make that assumption that they think it is. They're just going to sit at home and do the remote learning for 10 days. But we have had several who have come back with the negative results so that their kids could come. So we have, you have the doctor's notes, you have the negative tests, and then some people who are just like, okay, they're just going to all sit out for 10 days. And so I don't want to make any conjecture about how children look the next day. Unfortunately for them, unless you get cleared, we don't know how they look the next day until they show up back with us.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Evers. The next item under old business is the revision of policy 4.60 with purchases and contracts, which was on in front of your chair when you came in.
That's just, it's very minimal language change. It's looking at...
This is what we've talked about and needed and wanted and put into the policies for previous qualifications. Any questions? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the revision of policy 4.60. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is new business, the approval of the 2019-2020 audit report, which was enclosure number one. I think you went over a lot of this already, haven't you, Miss Bush?
I kind of have, yeah. I touched on it, the financials.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Is there anything else that you need to add to it or bring to our attention?
Not really. I was just going to point out that in case maybe read that the, went through the audit and read the, you know, thousand-page document that we do get because we follow the reporting basis required by the State Board of Education, we do get an adverse opinion every year because it's not generally accepted accounting principles. So that's, that's something that we're going to get every year. We're going to continue. Not a big deal. But we did get the opinion from the auditors that our financial statements, they feel are present fairly in all material respects the cash basis of accounting. So that's the best we can get based on the fact that we follow the State Board's guidelines. And that's just, like I said, something we're going to have every year. We also, one of the things with the audit report, the internal control, so they have to look at material weaknesses. They didn't find any material weaknesses. And the only finding they did have regarding our internal controls have to do with segregation of duties. So, and I've said this to you before in with our audit review, we've asked the question, different school districts have asked the question, what do we have to do to get rid of this finding? They can't really tell us. It's basically, we might know it when we see it, but this isn't it. You don't have enough people. And we just financially don't have enough money to hire what they think it looks like. So we're also going to have...
So they won't make suggestions? Like if you had this person do this instead of them doing this, they won't make any suggestions?
They want more staff. They want big, big staffs where everyone does things independently.
They're wanting to look like an accounting firm instead of a district.
Right, right. And it's just not feasible for us to have that many people doing everything, you know, where every function is completely separated because there are some crossovers and some duties, so.
But are there some hotspots that we might be able to address where we find that, okay, this one person is taking all the checks, writing all the checks for this one school, you know?
And we've tried to do that. And so I feel like our auditors are pretty happy. That's what I said. Do you see anything that we can do differently right now? Or do you feel like we have enough separation of duties that you're happy with our, you know, do you have any concerns? And they seem to think that we're doing fine. It's just the guidelines that are handed down, the audit guidelines...
Sure.
Want more. They just always want more.
Additional layers of checks and balances if you have separation of duties.
And you also have management oversight of financial statements that says corrected. And I was just curious how it was corrected or...
Nothing. We didn't, okay, so what is said, this is crazy. What the findings said before is that the staff doesn't have the expertise to do our financial statements. And I say every year, of course we do.
Because you're not a qualified CPA.
No, that's not even it. It's just that because, because of Enron and Arthur Anderson and all those situations years ago, it used to be fine for the auditors to come in and do the financial statements. But what they're supposed to be doing is you hand them the financial statements and they do their audit and they express an opinion on your financial statements. It's never been done that way with school audits and school accounting. They, you know, this AFR, I could, I could do this AFR that we get every year. I could, it's just the budget in a, you know, same form. It's called the annual, you know, the... But we've never done that. We don't do that. School districts don't typically do this themselves. But all of a sudden, the finding is gone and nothing has changed. I mean, I do financial statements, and the board, the board gets, or the auditors get what the board gets. So I don't know if it's, the finding is gone because they do know that we do have the knowledge to prepare the financial statements. It didn't even come up in conversation this year. It's just the findings.
So it's corrected, but we didn't really do anything. It's just marking it up.
We've always had the ability to do those financial statements because when they didn't, they didn't do any journal entries on my, on my financial statements. They didn't say, okay, we need to change this, reclassify this. The fund balances that you, that you see in the audit are the same thing as the fund balances that I gave you. You know, I've been calling them unaudited because we just got this, but yeah, no changes there.
Excellent.
So I thought that was interesting. That's a really good point. I'm glad you brought that up. So, let's see, the only other, within the audit, it was in the notes of the financial statements and it was page A14. There is, has been a change, the way they're reporting our fund balances, the education fund with an assigned fund balance. And that is merely the funds that we have on hand that belong to SIU pre-K at the end of the year. Because I talked to them about it and I said, this, I don't know if you would call it restricted necessarily, but they're not unassigned. They're not available for other expenditures. So that's something they've started doing is that $499,810 is what we have at the end of the year from SIU pre-K, early childhood funds. They had not been paid to them yet at that point in time. So that's something I was glad to see. And Dr. Evers did mention, and this is on page four, when you get farther on with the AFR, our estimated financial profile summary. And we did go down into the learning category from review. And as Dr. Evers said, the reason is our expenditures to revenue ratio. This is a weighted profile, so the fund balance to revenue and the expenditures to revenue, those are both worth 35%. So if you go down any at all, it's a, it's a big hit. So when we went to the ratio of 1.011 of our expenditures to revenues, that cost us a lot, a lot more in weighting. So that's why we didn't, we didn't go into it that deep. And so I think it's not unrealistic for us to think if we were really careful that we can reverse this situation in the next couple of years. And I would definitely like to see that happen because I don't like to have a profile score. But I think we also knew it was a possibility when we were in contract negotiations this year, when we had all the issues and unexpected expenses with COVID, that it wasn't a huge surprise to see this.
That we were adding those positions too, right? And we were trying to increase the
Yes.
Class size. So we added, basically added too many?
Well, I don't know that we added too many, but those positions were hired for last year anyway, for last year's audit.
We had an assistant now at all the buildings and...
We had a certain this year. That was a brand new one. But that's also part of evidence-based funding.
I was going to say, we tried to adopt the model of the EBF, best staff to teacher, or sorry, students to teacher ratio. And that's what they were recommending. So we were mirroring the model of what was, when you're talking about proration of EBF, mirroring the EBF model in a COVID year became a blessing when we're trying to maintain social distancing. It will not be a long-term blessing if we continue because if we have any type of, and I foresee where there'll be EBF proration for probably two to three years. So, yeah, I mean, modeling...
Administration didn't fall under that. I mean, that wasn't recommended right, though. So, I mean, the teachers fell under that, that they were recommended positions for EBF, but not...
Well, yeah, there were.
That's what they were.
When you look at the proportion of administrator to, like, the school population, there were recommendations for that. There were recommendations to add additional, like, counseling positions. But I looked at like, there weren't, that wasn't something that, it was really focused more on the classroom size. And then you do have, like you said, dean of students at the two, there are three of the buildings, and assistant principal at the four.
But that dean of students isn't administration.
No, I mean, it's, it's a non, it's a certified, but it's not an administrative role in those caruthers and the general. But there were, there were recommended levels for all positions, including like student advocates and roles like that. So, yes, I mean, to that level, there were definitely recommendations in all the EBF funding on how you should do proportionality in all those positions. But when I looked at how Murphy's role applied, they really focused on applying it toward the classroom level.
And we are required every year with the evidence-based reporting to talk about what do we spend money on, what do we plan to do. So this year, when we did our plan, because there is no new money, they weren't asking for all those details and they really couldn't. What are you going to do with the new money that you didn't get? So it's hard to talk about moving towards adequacy, which is the idea of evidence-based funding, where we're not getting additional funds to move towards adequacy. So that's kind of stalled for now, but there's still, I still think there's going to be, still be the accountability on what we're doing with those funds moving forward, assuming they don't continue to deeply prorate our funds.
So we moved towards adequacy, but they didn't move towards giving us the money to maintain it.
Right.
Right. The funding adequacy is...
It's not sustainable. I don't, I don't, truthfully, I don't see it as sustainable, even if they were funding the model.
And I want to say, I can't, I don't want to be wrong, but I want to say it was less than 200 per administrator was the recommendation. Can you imagine that? I mean, like, that was what they thought would be, like equity, like when you're looking through an equity lens, that's way more top-heavy than, than, you know, when you look at the high school that has roughly 600 students. That would be like three full-time administrators instead of, you know, two. And then at the elementaries where they have over 400 students, looking at more than just the principal and a dean of students. So it was, it was between 150 and 200, what I think was the administrative ratio that they recommended. And really, they're, they're not plentiful. And just like with the classroom reduction, that's why, you know, when you look at people who mirrored the evidence-based model, it was, when you're talking about an 18 to one model, with the teacher pipeline being lower than it ever has been, everyone was tagging on to teachers. And so that's why when you're looking at positions, you might only have four or five applicants during the summer for one position, when five years ago you would have 25 or 30. But the evidence, that's a, I guess, a good problem to be in where, you know, teachers are all employed, but we need more teachers. But we also need to be really, really sensible when we're, when we're having prorated EBF funding or flat. I mean, I think we're going to get flat or prorated for at least the next first, well, two or 30 years probably. But we can't do big changes because I don't think this is over anytime soon. I really don't. So just know, like, we'll have to do minor course corrections, so it may be two or three years where we're kind of coming out from under.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mrs. Bush. I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation. In a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the resolution to approve the repayment of the inter-fund loan between the working cash and the transportation.
Yes, and this is just kind of housekeeping items. The board did approve the inter-funds transfer back in April, 500,000 between working cash and transportation. But we now have the funds available to repay that inter-fund loan. And with board approval, I would like to do that.
Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. So move. In a second.
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes. Motion carries. We have a need to go into closed session.
The next motion is going to closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act 5, Allen Roy confound statutes 120 slash 2C to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or discharge of specific employees in the district included hearing testimony on complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity and number two, pending or threatened litigation.
In a second. Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes. Motion carries. Five minutes.